Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Sorry for the delay. The Committee on Public Property and Public Works is now in session. Clerk, would you please read the title of the bills?
Bill number 150652 is being held at the request of the sponsor. Bill number 150770, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire by purchase, condemnation, or otherwise title in some or all the parcels of land together with the improvements thereon situate commonly known as 351-355 West Penn Street and 5322-5334 New Hall Street under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 150809, an ordinance authorizing the City's managing director or is designated to enter into a cable television franchise renewal agreement with Comcast of Philadelphia LLC and Comcast of Philadelphia II LLC, renewing the cable television franchises granted by the City to Comcast for franchise areas 1, 2, 3, and 4 under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 150818, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City to acquire title or lesser interest such as an easement by purchase, condemnation, or otherwise in parcels of land along the Delaware River and the Delaware River Trail, and authorizing an agreement between the City and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the PRA to act as the City's condemnation agent under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 150846, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City to acquire fee simple title or a lesser interest in real estate in parcels of land along the Delaware River and the Kensington and Tacony Trail under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 150849, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce acting on behalf of the City to enter into an agreement with Tinnicum Township Delaware County for the lease and purchase from Tinnicum Township of an approximately 21.8 acre parcel of land adjacent to the Philadelphia International Airport, which is currently in use as a safety area at the end of a runway under certain terms and conditions. And bill number 150850, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or part of a parcel commonly known as 2721-2777 Ruth Street for further conveyance under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize that we have a quorum, that a quorum is present to my right, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez, Councilman Squiller to my left, Councilman Greenlee, and Councilman O. Is there anyone here from the Administration that wishes to testify on bill number 150770 today?
Good morning Chairman Heenan and members of the Committee on Public Property and Public Works. My name is Bridgette Collins-Greewald and I am the Commissioner of the Department of Public Property. I am here today to testify in support of bill number 150770, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to acquire by purchase, condemnation, or otherwise title in some or all the parcels of land together with the improvements thereon situate commonly known as 351-355 West Penn Street and 5322-5334 New Hall Street under certain terms and conditions. The City is acquiring these properties to replace the former Wissahicken Playground. The Department of Public Property supports this measure and accordingly, I respectfully ask that City Council approve bill 150770. I am requesting a suspension of the rules so as to allow for the first reading at the next session of council. Thank you. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I just have, I just have a quick question. In your testimony, the acquisition of the properties replaced the former Wissahicken Playground, what's the plan for, for the old playground?
What's it, what was that?
What is the plan for the old playground?
The old playground has been fenced off, there's a PHI property right next to it, so it's been fenced off, so there's no real use for the old playground right now except for whatever PHI is going to use it for, from what I understand. So what we're doing is actually replacing it in kind. So we're putting this land together so the people in the neighborhood, we made a commitment to still have a playground in that neighborhood.
Oh, that's great. So there's been communication and consulting with the neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Is there anyone on the committee that wishes to ask any questions? Great, is there any other members?
Point of information? Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hello over there. Hello.
Hello.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
I just wanted to thank Bridgette, the Commissioner, excuse me, thank the Commissioner for her hard work in this. This has very, been a very unusual process with the acquisition of these properties to replace the former Wissahicken Playground, which by all standards was unacceptable in terms of a playground and recreation space. And so we're excited that, you know, these new spaces will be added, but they're not just going to be the end of the conversation for what happens in that community, there's going to be additional long-term planning to make sure that we have enough of the recreation space that the residents want and certainly deserve in their neighborhoods. So I just wanted to thank you for your hard work on this and, you know, thank the committee for their support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there anyone else here that wishes to testify on bill number 150770? Great, well, thank you. Is there anyone from the Administration that wishes to testify on bill number 150818?
Me again. Good morning Chairman Heenan and members of the Committee on Public Property and Public Works. My name is Bridgette Collins-Greewald and I am the Commissioner of the Department of Public Property. I am here today to testify in support of bill number 150818, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City to acquire title or lesser interest such as an easement by purchase, condemnation, or otherwise in parcels of land along the Delaware River and the Delaware River Trail, and authorizing an agreement between the City and the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the PRA to act as the City's condemnation agent under certain terms and conditions. The acquisition will provide much-needed space for recreation and physical activity by allowing for the construction of the Delaware River Trail from its current terminus just south of the Sugar House Casino to Penn Treaty Park. The Department of Public Property supports this measure and accordingly, I respectfully ask that City Council approve bill number 150818. I am requesting a suspension of the rules so as to allow for the first reading at the next session of council. Thank you, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there any members of the committee that wish to testify? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Squiller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say thank you, Bridgette, also for this work. This has been a work in progress, trying to continue to trail along the Delaware River, and this is a parcel that has been unable to, to have access. So we believe this is the best way to move forward and looking forward to the continuation of the trail. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else here wishes to testify on bill number 150818? Thank you very much. We will now hear testimony on bill number 150846. Commissioner Greewald, please approach and begin with your testimony.
Good morning Chairman Heenan and members of the Committee on Public Property and Public Works. My name is Bridgette Collins-Greewald and I am the Commissioner of the Department of Public Property. I am here today to testify in support of bill number 150846, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City to acquire fee simple title or lesser interest in real estate in parcels of land along the Delaware River and Kensington and Tacony Trail under certain terms and conditions. This ordinance will enable the City to acquire land to complete the Kensington and Tacony Trail Recreation Path. The Department of Public Property supports this measure and accordingly, I respectfully ask that City Council approve bill number 150846. I am requesting a suspension of the rules so as to allow for the first reading at the next session of council. Thank you, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for members of the committee? Being none, thank you. Is there anyone else here that wishes to testify on bill number 150846? Commissioner Greewald, would you please begin your testimony on bill number 150850?
Sure. Good morning Chairman Heenan and members of the Committee on Public Property and Public Works. My name is Bridgette Collins-Greewald and I am the Commissioner of the Department of Public Property. I am here today to testify in support of bill number 150850, an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all or part of a parcel commonly known as 2721-2777 Ruth Street for further conveyance under certain terms and conditions. This property is being sold to Orinoka Mills LP, a Pennsylvania Limited Partnership in which New Kensington Community Development Corporation owns the general partner entity. The building will be developed into 51 units of affordable rental housing, the New Kensington CDC offices, a small retail component, as well as some open space. The Department of Public Property supports this measure and accordingly, I respectfully ask that City Council approve bill number 150850. I am requesting a suspension of the rules so as to allow for the first reading at the next session of council. Thank you, I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Commissioner. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Marie Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just also want to thank the Department of Public Property for working with our partner, in this case, New Kensington CDC, for taking on what is a very, very challenging project with a lot of stakeholders at the table. We expect that this development at Kensington off of Somerset will be a game changer in that neighborhood, so I really want to thank the City and all the departments who are helping us move this along. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Are there any other questions from any other members on the committee? Anyone from the public that wishes to testify on bill number 150850? Being none, thank you. We will now hear testimony on bill number 150849. Jim Tyrell, please approach the front and begin, state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Good morning Chairman Heenan. My name is James Tyrell. I'm the Deputy Director of Aviation for Property Management and Business Development at the airport, and I am pleased to appear before you today to testify in support of bill number 150849. The bill will authorize the City of Philadelphia through its Department of Commerce, Division of Aviation, and the Department of Public Property to lease, purchase approximately 21.8 acres of real property located adjacent to the western end of Philadelphia International Airport, Runway 9R, and the Delaware River from Tinnicum Township for continued use as a runway safety zone. The property is presently being leased by the City from Tinnicum Township pursuant to bill number 050337, which was authorized by City Council in 2005. During the term of the previous lease, the airport developed the premises to comply with the current FAA standards for runway safety zones. The property will be leased, purchased pursuant to an agreement that has been negotiated by the Law Department and Tinnicum Township's legal counsel. The agreement was also a component of, okay. The agreement was also a component of the comprehensive settlement agreements executed in April of this year between the City and Tinnicum Township, Interboro School District, and Delaware County. The airport has made the safety and security of our traveling passengers our foremost priority. This agreement will serve to continue the valuable safety component, and at the end of the term, the airport will own the property. Please amend the ordinance to include Exhibit B, which is the actual lease document. I ask the committee to approve the lease purchase of the property for use as a runway safety zone. I ask that the rules be suspended in order to permit the first reading at the next council session. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today in support of bill number 150849, and will be happy to answer questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Just a question, I know the length of the last lease for this property was 10 years, is that correct?
I believe it was.
Okay. And now I know this is for 50 years, and could you explain why, obviously a significant difference, could you just explain a little bit why that's so?
Well, the airport has to show that it has control over the property, satisfied the FAA requirements. It also helped Tinnicum Township agree to sell us the property.
Okay, so that was part of the deal, if you will?
Yes, yes, Councilman.
Okay. And what's the appraised value of the property? Did you, is that in here? Do we know?
It is not. We did have Joseph Messina, the City Solicitor's Office Councilman, we did have the property appraised, and based on the present value of the payment stream going out very far, it came in below our appraisal.
Below, I'm sorry?
Below the appraisal.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other members of the committee have any, any testimony here and make any statements? Anyone else here that wishes to testify on bill number 150849? Well, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
We will start with bill number 150652. There's a few things that I want to state before we hear some public. 150652, my apology, is being held at the request of the sponsor. We will now hear testimony for bill number 150809, in which I'm going to make a brief statement before we hear some testimony from the general public. But first, I want to, before I welcome all our witnesses, let me explain where we are and why we will not be taking any testimony from Comcast and the Administration today because we've, quite frankly, we've heard a lot throughout, from each of them throughout this process. Instead, we're going to let the general public have another opportunity to voice their concerns, and we are going to allow members to state for the record what they need to see in the franchise agreement. So my goal throughout this process has been to create a fair process to get the best possible deal for the citizens of Philadelphia. So we're going to take public comment, we're going to hear from them, we're going to hear from the members, and we're going to go back and we're going to get back together with Comcast and the Administration to hash out the rest of the issues. So we're going to hold this bill in the public meeting today until Thursday, 8:30 a.m., and there were public hearing, and we're going to get this deal done, you know, before we have our regular session on Thursday, and that is the intent. I can't promise anything, but that is certainly the intent. Finally, I want to say, I want to thank the negotiating team for the progress they have made thus far. So with that, I want to ask if there is anybody here from the general public that would like to testify on bill number 150809, the Comcast franchise agreement. The clerk has a list. If those who have not signed up, please sign up to my back left. And the clerk, please, would you read the name of folks who would like to testify publicly here today?
First three-person panel to approach the witness.
This table will be Katie Sipp, Lavander Tak, and Pele Gladen.
You can state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Yep, my name is Katie Sipp, and I'm the Director of Pennsylvania Working Families. Thank you, Councilman Heenan, and the rest of the members of the committee for allowing me to speak today. I am, we're back again to, you know, sort of remind council that we think it's imperative in a city that has a Fortune 50 company, which, you know, about which you could say they've been really given a lot, that it's time to make sure that they are giving what the rest of the city needs. And so there's a couple of things that I would just, again, urge council to make sure get included into the franchise agreement. Number one, we need this company to be creating jobs for residents of the City of Philadelphia that pay the prevailing wage. We're a union town, there should be a neutrality agreement in the franchise that allows workers, if they so choose, to organize unions and to bargain collectively, but we really believe that regardless of whether or not the workers at Comcast and in all of their subcontractors and contractors have unions, that they deserve to make at least $15 an hour in the prevailing wage if that is higher. The second thing I want to reiterate is that, again, we really think, you know, in the 21st century economy, all of our kids need to be able to get online to do their homework. I had a situation a couple of weeks ago where I came, I was at a meeting at my kid's school, and my son was texting me like, "The internet's out, I can't write a paper." And the idea that we have to have folks wait three months to get their internet turned on if they're eligible for Internet Essentials is totally ridiculous. If people are eligible, if they have the money to pay and they're able to, you know, get online, their kids should be able to do their homework at home and not have to go to the public library, or go to a friend's house, or go anywhere else. We should be getting rid of the requirement that in order to get Internet Essentials, you need to have your service shut off for 90 days. It's crazy. And the last thing that I want to say is, we are a world-class city, and we need to have a world-class education system, which includes preparing our kids for the future by teaching them all of the kinds of things that technology can help them do. It's preparing them for employment for the future. We've got to have Comcast investing in career and technical education in the school district of Philadelphia and making sure that that is something that our kids get. So thank you very much.
Thank you. You can state your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Good morning. My name's Lea Vander Tak. I was introduced to Philly Cam through the six-month co-op program at Drexel. Through that time, I got to meet, befriend, and help tons of people and groups in the community with their video projects. Among those groups were many nonprofits whom I shot and edited videos for that reflected the realities of our city better than our main, any mainstream local news outlet. the realities of our city better than our main, any mainstream local news outlet I've seen. PhillyCam exposed me to the voices of people I never otherwise would have heard. I also learned more and felt more fulfilled in those six months than the majority of my time at Drexel. I'm happy to say that in two weeks, I'm officially graduating Drexel with a job at PhillyCam, and I hope they get the increased funding they need and deserve, and deserve, to account for their clear growth in membership, to get them deeper into our communities, and to employ recent graduates like me. Thank you.
You can state your name for the record and proceed with your testimony.
Hi, Council. My name is Pele Ergang Laiden, and I am a member of 15 Now, the movement to raise the minimum wage to $15 an hour. I'm also a resident of Philadelphia, living in Councilman Squill's district. This is the final hour for the public, for us to come and speak with our elected representatives and demand that they put the interests of us, of Philadelphians, of the people, before the corporation Comcast. We're here in this last opportunity for the public to speak to you, to demand that you hold Comcast accountable, that you, and as you know, they can do more, and you make sure that they are paying their workers a prevailing wage of at least $15 an hour, and as workers have the right to form a union. As, as a major corporation in Philadelphia, and with Philadelphia as its hometown, Comcast has the obligation to pay their workers a living wage and to be an example for this city by paying workers at least $15 an hour and allowing them to unionize. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony. Clerk?
Nina Fay, Brian Mercer, Reverend Greg Holston.
Thank you, Councilman Heenan, and the whole of this committee for working hard to ensure public input in this process.
State your name for the record, please.
My name is Brian Mercer. I'm a resident here in Philadelphia, living in the West Philadelphia neighborhood. I want to submit testimony on the 90-day window requirement for current Comcast internet subscribers to receive Internet Essentials. Comcast states that the window exists because Internet Essentials is a digital inclusion program, but from experiences working with low-income people in search of internet access, this requirement means that Internet Essentials is really a customer acquisition program. The 90-day window is just yet another barrier that prevents people who are balancing internet with all the other bills and utilities in their lives from getting online. If you are a low-income Comcast customer today and need an option to save money in your home, then you have to turn off your service for 90 days from Comcast in order to get Internet Essentials. But if you're a customer of another internet service provider today, and you want an option to save money, then you could switch today to Comcast Internet Essentials program. It's clear that this, from this discrepancy, that Comcast is more interested in gaining new-paying customers, and will actually penalize low-income customers who've already committed to them, rather than rewarding them. This barrier, along with high eligibility requirements, means that there are often zero affordable options to recommend low-income people trying to get online. Comcast Internet Essentials is not like programs available in some areas like Mobile Beacon and Jump Wireless that allow any person to sign up for low-income service that do address the digital divide. Comcast instead uses the issue of the digital divide to profit off the hardship of poor people. Council should keep fighting the hard fight to end this 90-day policy for this franchise. Thank you.
Thank you. You can state your name and proceed with your testimony, please.
Reverend Gregory Holston. I'm the pastor of New Vision United Methodist Church here at Broad and West Bolin Streets. I'm also the co-chair of Power Economic Dignity Team, Power Philadelphians Organized to Witness and Power and Rebuild 45 Houses of Faith in the City of Philadelphia and 15 houses in the suburbs dedicated to building a city of opportunity that works for all. And again, I've just been recently named the National President of OIC of America, 38 affiliates in 22 states across the country, all building and working with the underserved and, and poor communities across our country. I'm here more as a pastor today because in North Philadelphia, we have a breakfast we do every Sunday, and we serve 50 to 75 to 100 people, mostly men, many of them ex-offenders, many of them trying to rebuild their lives. And to rebuild your life, you need to be able to get a job. Fortunately, without internet access, it's very difficult to be able to even apply for a job today. And so their struggle, as we have allowed them at times to have internet access through our church, is difficult for them to be able to survive. I applaud council here today. I applaud your work, I applaud your leadership in beginning to have a framework of a deal that can begin to think about those individuals. But Comcast can do more. Comcast can assure that those individuals that we serve every Sunday have internet access, so they can begin to rebuild their lives. Comcast, a company of $64 billion in revenue and $8 billion in profit, can be able to do more to help a city that is the poorest big city in the country. I thank you for your leadership, because I've seen you, I've been with you, many of you have been at my church and seen the faces of this poverty that we exist, and I don't want you to just keep that, those faces of those individuals in mind when you're fighting and negotiating with Comcast today, that you got to fight for them, fight for them, fight for them.
Thank you.
And we can make a difference. Comcast can do more.
We do have an awesome team up here, so I just want to, I just want to state that for the record. You can state your name and proceed with your testimony. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nina Fay, and this is the third hearing that I've been to and the second time that I've taken off work without pay. I'm a parent of a public school student and a public school teacher. My son, who is the public school teacher, he teaches at B and A Allegheny, and mostly, obviously, low-income kids, and there are no resources, including technology, in his classroom. There are no computers, there may be a few that they have that are over 10 years old. My other son is lucky, because he actually goes to Science Leadership Academy, and even though he's lucky and it's a magnet school, we raise most of the money for, we raise hundreds of thousands of dollars, the home and school, for computers for the kids, for laptops, for, we pay for a teacher, I mean, we pay out of our own pockets to subsidize a teacher because of the school cuts. So what I would like to say is, why can't all kids train to use technology to succeed? Why can't all young people have an affordable, reliable internet hookup at home? Comcast pays a small percentage of property tax that would otherwise, they would otherwise owe on their massive skyscrapers. In exchange, we need them to make Philadelphia the shining star of tech education and internet access, rather than the third worst of any big city in the U.S. We need council to fight now, today, for Comcast to expand affordable internet to every home in the city as part of this franchise, and we need council to fight now, today, for Comcast to pay its fair share to technology education in our public schools. And I would also like to say, the 90-day, to shut off your internet for 90 days, I thought it was pretty amusing when I was here the last time, that when they asked Comcast why they do it, none of them knew an answer. They didn't have an answer to give on that, which was pretty silly. Anyway, thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you. Clerk, please read the title of next panel.
Hannah Sassman, Sean Brown, Molly Lawrence.
Good morning, council members and members of the public. My name is Hannah Sassman, and I am an organizer with the Media Mobilizing Project. And I was able to testify at the last hearing, but as I know we're at the 11th hour now, I just want to state that the different issues that you're hearing about today, like getting rid of that 90-day window on eligibility for Internet Essentials, and otherwise expanding it to far more low-income people, establishing career and technology education programs at Philadelphia public schools, and making sure our workers earn a prevailing wage. If we won those things, if you're able to negotiate for those things, you would be building the strongest franchise in the United States, as well as establishing a precedent for every community around the country to be able to fight for their right to communicate. Now, Philadelphia is special, like this is Comcast hometown, and the commitment that they need to make here is very different than the commitment that they'll be making in other places, but until we guarantee access to the internet as a human right, as something as available to all people, whether you're poor or rich, like water, like, like heat, then this is the kind of work we need to do. So I just want to say that everyone here, thousands of other people are standing with you, to try to pass a franchise now, before the end of session, that does these things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. State your name for the record and begin with your testimony.
Thank you. My name is Sean Brown. I'm on staff with Media Mobilizing Project. I live in this region, and I just wanted to offer a little bit of insight. So I think there's a, no pun intended, but there's an essential question here, which is, who has the power? The people, or the powerful? The corporation, or the community? Will Comcast add a few steps to the staircase that leads us to success? I'm sure it will, and I'm sure that ultimately Comcast will do the right thing, and the city council will support what we all know to be common sense requests, which includes no three-month waiting period. That seems odd that a person has to go three months without any internet to get something which, in the name itself, is considered to be essential. We also need to make sure that tech education is funded. We live in a world where 60% of the jobs that will exist 10 years from now don't exist today. 6% of the jobs that exist 10 years from now don't exist today. But we do know about those jobs, even though we don't know exactly what will be in the job description, is that you have to have strong technical skills, whether it's being able to write code, being able to create a presentation, be able to create a spreadsheet, be able to use the internet to do research. These are things that have to be learned in the classroom, but these are also things that Comcast can support with their, with their profits to support the school district in order to make sure that students in Philly, whether they're poor or middle-class, poor middle-class families, are able to know those things. And lastly, and just as importantly, no group of workers in this country should be limited in their ability to organize in order to be able to pair, to be able to be paid a fair wage. If we don't want Philly to be the largest poor city in America, then there are steps that this council can take in partnerships with Comcast, setting a national example for its workers to be paid a living wage, which starts at $15 an hour. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. State your name for the record. Go ahead, go for it.
Okay. Hello, my name is Molly Lawrence. I'm from the University Community Collaborative, and I'm here to talk to you today about Comcast. The reality here is that Comcast administration, by the rules of the game, have to ask you guys for these tax breaks, have to ask you guys for these concessions, so that they can make their highest profits possible. But the reality is that when companies ask for these big tax breaks, cities suffer in long-term economic development because of the lost revenue. The revenue could be used to fund more meaningful economic ventures in education and technology infrastructure for future development that would mean much more to the City of Philadelphia than a simple property tax break. And these corporations don't need them. As a facilitator in after-school programs, I worked with high school students from across the City of Philadelphia, from a variety of schools, from public to charter to private. And while I'm fortunate enough to work at Temple University, where we have access to computers and different technologies so that students can make media projects about issues in their community that make an impact, they cannot do those same things at their own schools. And often, I find myself, as a classroom facilitator, having to supplement for what their schools don't have. As my seniors are applying for college, and many of them have to fill out the Common Application, which is an online application to send out to various universities to apply for college, many of them don't have access to computers at home or in their schools to be able to fill out these applications. Many of them don't have counselors in their schools on a regular basis to be able to help them get into schools. Whereas, I grew up in Delaware County, I had six counselors dedicated to our high, just one high school alone, to help you get into college and help you fill out the applications and do that process. We had a dedicated counselor for college access. We had, we now have iPads for every student, laptop carts, computer, computer labs and computers in the library. There should not be that great of a difference in access and in resources between two different counties in the same state, as far as what students have access to, and how they can be better prepared to get into schools and get into jobs in the future. So we're asking today that, that we increase the access to affordable internet in Philadelphia, and that for, that we end the 90-day shut-off period for their Internet Essentials program, that we, that we end their policy to achieve $0 debt on their current package, as many low-income people would find that as a very difficult struggle to be able to get to $0 before signing up for Internet Essentials. Clearly, they don't have money, that's why they're trying to sign up for these programs. And they can eventually pay it off over time, but requiring them to have that $0 debt is a large hurdle. And there are limitations on having kids between a certain age bracket in order to have access to these programs. As a sort of gauge of how accessible this Internet Essentials program is, it's almost as hard to be accepted into the Harvard Law School as it is for applicants to be accepted into the Internet Essentials program. Currently, there's a 7% chance of being accepted into Internet Essentials, there's a 4% to 5% chance of being accepted into Harvard Law. Philadelphia has the third worst broadband connection out of the 25 biggest cities in the U.S. because our city's deep levels of poverty and Comcast's internet monopoly. And finally, we want tech education for our schools, we want Comcast to fund our public schools and tech education resources and tech and staffing support, because schools need at least one computer for every student, or at least up-to-date tech labs with working computers for their students. Staffing for tech labs, given there are seven trained IT support technicians for 216 schools in Philadelphia. And Comcast should be more involved with the growing yet underfunded developing and programming education initiatives in the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Clerk, can you read the next?
John Bergen, Malik Diara, Mitch Shannon.
Thank you for coming in this morning. If you could state your name for the record and then begin with your brief testimony.
Okay. Hi, my name is Malik Diara. I'm a member of Action United and a resident of southwest Philadelphia. I've talked before about how I was upsold by Comcast, and as this result, of this result, that experience, I no longer qualify for Internet Essentials. Internet Essentials, I'm still, oh, Internet Essentials. I am still on a fixed income. Here's the reason why. To be eligible for Internet Essentials, again, I would have to go 90 days without internet service. My daughter cannot go 90 days without doing her homework. I cannot go 90 days without paying my bills. Internet access is a basic need for my family, and it forces us, to force us 90 days to go without Internet Essentials, it's unfair. Also, I have a bank bill that I cannot afford to pay all at once. Comcast is so greedy that they want, they want all, want it all up at, oh, okay, sorry, okay. Oh, they want it all up front. Sorry, sorry, somebody. I don't, oh, dang. Or I don't get any. Or I don't get any service. As long as I am making the effort to pay off my back bill, I should be able to get affordable Internet. Otherwise, I will fall deeper into debt. I am sure there are many other people in Philadelphia who are in similar situations. We demand that Comcast get people off this waiting period and give us access to affordable Internet while working with us. I'm so sorry, but this is so deep to me. I live on a fixed income, and I feel like Comcast should be able to work with us. My story is so, working with Comcast is a hard task. Now, I posed, I went to the school, and I got the letter from the school that stated that I should be on affordable Internet, only paying $10 a month. And then I got upsold by Comcast, paying $37 a month. The bill just kept on going higher and higher. Then I'm paying two times in one month. That's so unfair to us. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. State your name.
My name is John Bergen, and I serve as the Outreach Minister at Old First Reformed UCC over in the old city. I'm a relatively new resident of Philadelphia, and I do not have children, so I cannot speak to the ways in which Comcast fails students and parents in Philadelphia. But what I do want to share is the difficulty faced by many of the homeless men that I know through my work as an outreach minister. Access to Internet is crucial for people working to escape homelessness. Frequently, someone I interact with asks me to use my phone for the Internet, or asks to have our Wi-Fi password at the church. Last week, I helped a man named Quentin use our Internet to make a needed appointment at the VA Hospital, which was necessary to receive payments to help with his transitional housing. For people who can make it into more stable housing, Internet access is incredibly important. The Internet Essentials program is not accessible to many people who are moving into transitional housing. Quentin and others do not have school-aged children. They may have back bills owed, other things may disqualify them. Without Internet in their home, even the very, very slow Internet provided through Internet Essentials, many people trying to escape homelessness have to go to libraries and wait in line to do basic things like search for jobs, contact friends and relatives, or check their email. Let me put this as simply as I can. Without reliable access to Internet, it is difficult to break the cycle of homelessness. Comcast fails to provide a needed service to help the men I know like Quentin. Comcast's Internet Essentials program is not accessible, and this hurts the homeless community in Philadelphia. Comcast must do better, and I ask everyone in council to push Comcast to do better. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. State your name for the record.
Sure. My name is Mitch Shannon. I'm an almost lifelong resident of Philadelphia, born and bred here. So much of what I would want to say has already been stated a lot more eloquently than I could, but I guess I want to just share a bit of a story that my mother actually started telling at the last hearing when she testified, to illustrate the importance of expanding access to Internet Essentials. My mother was a school secretary in northeast Philly for a long time, 28 years, something like that, working in a couple different schools. And when she was here last time, she was speaking about the fact that students' grades would be influenced very significantly by whether or not they had Internet access at home, that the lower-income students in the schools where she worked often did not have reliable access to the Internet, and they couldn't complete their assignments on time or at all, and that they would actually get poor grades. And the teachers were really struggling with it, but they couldn't extend the deadlines or exempt students from doing certain kinds of work just because they didn't have Internet access at home. And that produced a lot of frustration and alienation, and a real sense among some of the students that they weren't valued as much as other students were. She worked in two different schools. One school, Austin-Mean Middle School, this was a very, a very serious problem. She also worked in a much more affluent school, the Greenberg School, further in the northeast, and these kinds of inequities weren't nearly as present there. And this is just wrong. Internet access is essential. You cannot achieve your basic tasks that you need to do on a daily basis without it. If it's called Internet Essentials, that's because it's essential. And I think that it's really critical that Comcast expand access to that program and take away the barriers, like the 90-day waiting period, the age restrictions, and the requirement that you have a zero debt balance with Comcast. So please act in the best interest of students and others throughout the city, and insist that Comcast expand access to Internet Essentials to everybody.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Clerk, do we have any?
Ron Whitehorn, Gretchen Clausen.
Is that on the last one? Good morning, Gretchen Clausen. I'm the Executive Director of PhillyCAM. And again, I thank this committee and the negotiating team for all the incredible work that has been put into this franchise negotiation. And I am pleased to just have this opportunity to address you one more time as we are in this 11th hour. I feel like I'm the Eagles, and we're trying to get from the 10-yard line into the end zone, and there's still some really important things that I hope you can negotiate into this agreement. Under, PhillyCAM is still looking at a significant budget cut under the current terms of this newly renegotiated franchise. Under the last one, PhillyCAM received 90% of the funds allocated for PEG, and under this proposal, we're only looking to receive 50%. And if the support continues at this level, we'll be able to maintain and sort of carry on the programs that we have been doing, providing access to all Philadelphians to be able to make and share their own media content on our cable channels and online. But in five years, continuing on this, with this level of support, we will be in a position where we're going to need to lay off staff and cut our programs. And I've not really gotten a satisfactory answer from Comcast as to why in other cities, including in most recently negotiated franchises such as St. Paul, Minnesota, where they have fewer residents and fewer cable subscribers, that they receive significantly more operating and capital support from their respective cable franchises. So why in our hometown are we not able to have a public access television station that is the most well-supported in the country? I'm, I'm going to get a little wonky here, and I'm going to go quick. Wonky, but quick.
Please, thank you.
So there is language in there for the programming guide, and this is how people are able to find out information about their, about the channels and the programming that's being aired, and this is vitally important. But there's really no provision that ensures that this is at no cost to the access centers, so I would really urge the committee to make sure that that language is included in there. Also, in the previous franchise agreement, there had been a commitment to providing the access channels with free public service announcements to be able to promote the work that we do. That has been scratched from this new franchise. I really have no idea why, so I would definitely urge the committee to see the return of those PSAs. And also, we have a vision to be able to expand our channels to five. Unfortunately, that's not going to happen, because as part of this negotiation, we've already lost the opportunity to expand to one of those channels and received no compensation for the return of that channel. But we still have a vision to grow to four channels, to have a youth channel, an arts and culture channel, a heritage channel. But in order to do that, we have to meet certain thresholds that at this point are really quite onerous, and so that I would ask that the thresholds be relaxed from 20 to 15. And in closing, again, I just want to thank this committee for all their work, and I hope that you will work to make an even fairer franchise than the one that you've gotten so far.
Thank you for your testimony. State your name for the record, and you maybe begin with your testimony.
Thank you. My name's Ron Whitehorn. I'm the coordinator for the Philadelphia Coalition Advocating for Public Schools, and we're part of the coalition that's here today. I want to speak in particular to the importance of funding and Comcast funding and supporting CTE programs in our schools. I testified last month, I talked about my own experience as a teacher and the power of computer technology in unleasing the creative and critical thinking potential of our students. I think the case for supporting our CTE programs is rather obvious to our city. It would expand job opportunities for our people, it would mean a more educated labor force, it would be a great fit for Comcast, which is a digital technology company. I want to urge council, as has been said before, to take this to another level. Comcast has to do more. I think fundamentally, what we have here is a moral question. When I look around our city, and I contrast the shiny tower that Comcast has built with all its bells and whistles and housing this corporation, which is among the most profitable in the world, I contrast that with our schools that are dilapidated, understaffed, under-resourced, where children are getting a decidedly second-class education, and I say to myself, what is wrong with this city? What is wrong with this country? So I think we can take a small step here to set things right by making Comcast do more, by holding them to a stricter standard. So I thank you today for your efforts and hope we can get it done.
Thank you for your testimony. Clerk? Okay. Are there any members that wish to make any statements for the record? Chair recognizes Councilwoman Greenley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first of all, I just want to certainly get on record, recognizing your efforts and the efforts of your staff in taking on this issue and keeping people informed and dealing with this very important issue that's going to affect us for a long time. So again, you and your people should be congratulated on that. But I think many of us will still agree that there's still some things that need to get done before Thursday morning. And I just want to mention two of them, and I think other members probably have some issues they want to raise too. And these issues have been raised by the public today, particularly the Internet Essentials program. As one of the speakers said, it is aptly named, it is essential, it is essential as many people as possible have access to the Internet, and thus, in my opinion, it is essential that that 90-day turnoff program be eliminated immediately. Ms. Chairman, you may, you may remember, at the last hearing, I asked for a reason why that program is in place. One of the Comcast representatives got up and said, "I can't give you a good reason." And that was probably the truest answer I could hear. Now, in the interim, there has been more wordy explanations given by Comcast, but with all due respect, I'd say it still reverts back to the same thing. There is no good answer why you have this 90-day turnoff policy. And where I don't like to draw lines in the sand, it's not my style, I have to say personally, this is just for me, if that program, if that 90-day turnoff is not eliminated, I have trouble voting for this, for this package. And just one other thing, real quickly, prevailing wage has been an issue that has been brought up many, many times in this city council. I know it's an issue you feel very strongly about, and I would just say and urge Comcast that any worker, any and every worker, should have a prevailing wage if they're involved with Comcast, and we would certainly keep pushing for that. Again, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for all you've done, and hopefully by Thursday morning, we can have all these worked out, and we can have a, have a package that we can all be proud of. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Marie Quinones Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to echo the words of our, my colleague, Greenley. The Public Property Committee and the chairman and the city team have worked diligently with all of the Comcast representatives to get us to a better place, and hopefully over the next 48 hours, we will be at even a better place. The issues of Internet Essentials, as you sign on into a 15-year deal that we don't know what the world is going to look like in 15 years, is hugely important. The issue of Wi-Fi access is going to be essential, and even more essential to underrepresented communities and communities in poverty, where access to health care and other issues become vital. So I think there's still some work to be done on that. I'm particularly concerned about limiting some of the Internet Essentials programming, capping at a quarter of a million dollars, which will only really cover about 1,000 people who don't fall into our priority areas of children and seniors, and I think we could do better in that, you know? In council, we've been very consistent on prevailing wage, on sick leave, and we really need corporations like Comcast to not shield subcontractors and some of the other work that they do. This is about all workers related to Comcast, ensuring, you know, sick leave and prevailing wage and all the other things that we have fought for and consistently have advocated here. You know, the 90-day blackout period, you know, that's a business model and one we disagree on. There is no explanation. It's a bad business model, and we need to make sure that we continue to fight for that. For me, expanded local programming is hugely important. You know, if we're going to be a world-class city, there should be a Spanish-language station, there should be an Asian station, there should be a station that allows cultural local programming where young people and Afro-Caribbean, we just have so much potential, and so this is one of those times when we got to think big and then think bigger. As it relates to CTE, creating a jobs pipeline is hugely important for Philadelphians. As we talk about our poverty rate and we talk about our young people, as I shared with the Comcast officials yesterday, I have a beautiful lamp created by my CTE students at Massbomb, the auto mechanic, welding, carpenters, and electrical workshops made a lamp for me. We have an incredibly talented pool of young people, and they should be able to walk the halls of that beautiful Comcast center, not when they graduate, but before they graduate, and they should be able to start working immediately after graduation. And while we want all our kids to go to college, we understand that Comcast can serve as a critical partner in employing Philadelphians. So we've come a long way, we appreciate all the movement from Comcast, and we're going to continue over the next 48 hours to ask for a little bit more. This is about not just good business, as studies have begun to show, when you pay $15 an hour, when you give employees added benefits, it helps the bottom line. And for me, the bottom line is Philadelphians. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you very much. I too would like to commend this committee, and I would like to associate myself and agree with all the comments made in terms of the needs in our communities, from certainly from PhillyCAM to the 90-day requirement that no one understands, as has been said, there's no reason for it. People should not have to consider, as a young mother did, about being delinquent and not being able to get service they need for their families. That's just unfair. It's unfair. Some things breed on being immoral, and that's one of them. Delinquency doesn't mean that you shouldn't be able to have the service. And also, people who, people should not have to consider that they may get service at less than the speed that is required to have good service because maybe they don't have money or they're on another status level. Equality of care, whether it be health or whether it be Comcast, shouldn't depend on who you are or what you have. Everybody deserves equality when it comes to service. And we are really saying that we want to get these issues resolved before Thursday. So from all of these issues, the Internet Essentials, all that has been mentioned here, we are looking forward to being on one accord so that we may move forward on Thursday morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to join in with the, with my colleagues in terms of the comments that have been made thus far. We certainly hope that this can be ironed out by Thursday, but as been said, I think that the 90-day rule is just a non-starter. This is something that makes absolutely no sense. And, you know, as one of the parents who spoke before today We certainly hope that this can be ironed out by Thursday, but as been said, I think that the 90-day rule is just a non-starter. This is something that makes absolutely no sense. And, you know, as one of the parents who spoke before said, they mentioned her child can't go 90 days without doing her homework. And, you know, we don't have the luxury of saying, "I'm not going to pay my bills for 90 days," or "I'm not going to pay my rent," or "I'm not going to buy food for 90 days." And so these are some of the things that we've asked Comcast over and over to explain, and we just really can't get the explanation that makes any sense to any of us. And we, we, we want Comcast to be here. We want them to be successful. And I think that Philadelphians overall have made the investment for Comcast to see that success. We've made the investment in terms of tax breaks and subsidies and support for Comcast. We've given, we've given a lot, and, and we expect in return that Comcast will be supportive and help the city that it calls home. And so we certainly hope that, you know, that there's going to be a way to see our way through all of these things. It seems as if, you know, we often penalize low-income folks or poor folks for being poor because waiting 90 days suggests this is access to a luxury and not access to a necessity. And this is absolutely a necessity. There's no question about it. It's needed to pay bills, it's needed for a job, it's needed for homework, and to get the vital information that we need to function in today's society. And so, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, you know, thank you for the work that you've done on this. I know you've worked very, very hard, and we look forward to continuing the work or seeing the work that you do to bring this to a close because I think that, you know, there's still some things that have to be addressed before the members will be ready, so, according to the colleague, our colleagues here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The chair recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Let me first start by saying thank you for your hard work, you and your staff, that has carried the bulk of the weight on this very complex and important matter. I'd also like to thank your staff and yourself for keeping us all informed and having these very, very fair and informative hearings. I'd like to thank the administration for the hard work they've put in, and I'd like to thank Comcast for being a very important part of, you know, meeting everyone more than halfway. I got a briefing recently, and even from the last hearing that we had, Comcast has certainly added more to the benefits that folks are seeking from this franchise agreement. I'm a big fan of Comcast. I think Comcast is one of the wonderful corporations we have in our city. It certainly brands us as a city. Its investment in our city, its commitment to our city, its, uh, building of our new innovation center is really changing the face of Philadelphia. That having been said, and as a big fan of Comcast, I believe that Comcast has the heart and the will to do a little bit more. I really think so. And I appreciate everything that Comcast means to our city. And I'm asking Comcast to step up just a little bit more so that this city will truly be a city that is proud to have Comcast here. And we already are. You know, let me not say that, I think many people appreciate what Comcast means to our city. But I think there's two important issues for me. One is that as a elected official on the other side of this table, it is my duty to ensure that, number one, customer service to those paying customers, the folks in our city, that's the best it can be.
Excuse me, Councilman, may I go out of order for one moment?
Sure.
For a pointed personal privilege. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to leave council chambers. I have students waiting for me to speak to them at your study center, but I would like to be voted aye for all bills that are reported out and any suspensions required, and also for the continuation of this Comcast bill until Thursday morning. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The record will duly rectify or recognize your affirmative votes. The chair again recognizes Councilman O'Neal.
Thank you, Chairman. So customer service, one. Number two, local employment and opportunity. And I know Comcast has a wonderful commitment to veterans and to hiring folks in our city, but I would also say it is certainly an issue for me to see that as much of Philadelphia is talent and innovation be highlighted whenever possible, as Comcast is our hometown corporation and has the ability to do that. If it does not, certainly PhillyCAM can be a part of delivering that opportunity for Philadelphians, highlighting our local talent and, and, and all the good things in our city that deserve to be highlighted. And so if that's, if those are things, I know that there's some issues about mobile units and, and things like that. I know where that is in the discussion. But I think on Thursday, we will see where we are in this entire process. And thank you so much for all that you do and for being, you know, a part of not just a, a beating about the shoulders, but willing and enthusiastic contributing a corporate citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So based on what we've heard here today, I'm going to ask that the negotiating teams get back, get back to business, and here's where we are, so I can sum it up quickly from, from today's hearing. All right, so we need to go back and find some solutions on, on the following issues: the 90 days, additional funding for the program to support people who don't have kids and that are not seniors, prevailing wages for workers who are doing work in our rights, in our public rights a ways, and career technical education, CTE partnerships. I do have a request for another member that could not be here today, on behalf of Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown, and I will submit this letter for the record. And this, pleased to allow this letter to highlight her strong and continued support for Philadelphia's arts and culture community, supporting the minority arts and culture organizations worthy of future and worthy consideration. So she believes that the Philadelphia Culture Fund is the most neutral and well-positioned vehicle for that ongoing and continued support. So on behalf, I will submit that in for the record in its entirety. So once these issues are addressed, we'll be able to say that we will and do have the best agreement in the country, so I appreciate that. There being no one else here to testify on this bill, the hearing on Bill Number 150809 is concluded, and we will now move on into our public meeting and temporarily suspend our public hearing. All right, chair recognizes Councilman Greenly on a motion of Bill Number 150849.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move for the adoption of the amendment to Bill Number 150849.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, it has been moved and seconded. The ayes have it. It is, the ayes have it, and the amendment to Bill Number 150849 has been adopted. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenly for a motion for Bills Number 150770, 150818, 150846, 150849 as amended, and 150850.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the, the just-read bills be voted out of this committee with a favorable recommendation. Furthermore, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of, of the bills at our next session of council.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and the bills that just read will be reported out of committee with a favorable recommendation and with the suspension of the rules as to allow the first reading of said bills at our next council session. I recognize Councilman Greenly for a motion to recess the public hearing on Bill Number... Excuse me? And we will now move back into, a motion to move back into the recessed public hearing on Bill Number 150809.
Thank you, Mitch. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the public hearing on Bill Number 150809 stand in recess until Thursday, December 3rd at 8:30 a.m.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. It has been moved and properly seconded that the public hearing on this committee on Bill Number 150809 will be recessed until Thursday, December 3rd, 8:30. All those in favor, a motion by signifying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, and a motion carries in the public meeting. Public hearing on Bill Number 150809 will stay in recess until Thursday morning, December 3rd, 8:30 a.m. This concludes the business of the committee for today, and we'll thank you very much.